Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 23 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. At this time, I would ask that everyone please silence any devices that can make noise. Should an emergency arise during the meeting, please proceed carefully out the door to the right and down the stairs. Should that exit be blocked, please make a left and a right and go down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators, and if you need special assistance, we'll be glad to provide it to you. Before I start tonight, I would like to recognize two individuals who are dear and dear to our hearts. One is former City Council President Louise Smith. And former City Clerk Brenda Colgrove. Nice to have you tonight. Take it easy on me, Louise. You want your... Okay. At this time, I'd like Pastor Robert Reinert of Faith Baptist Church to lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we rejoice in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We thank you, dear God, for your infinite wisdom, and as part of that wisdom, you brought into being human government. We thank you, dear God, for our mayor and these choice servants who serve this city and you on this council. We pray, dear God, that you would give them wisdom from on high, protect them, and guide them in the decisions that they will make, that this city would continue to prosper and grow, and be a tremendous place for families to be raised, and for seniors to retire and live out a glorious life. Thank you for the city of Salisbury. Bless the meeting tonight, I pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. Please stand now and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have a presentation. Mr. Mayor?
So, I know we have a community organization presentation this evening, but we also have a very, very special person that we want to recognize, and a person who means a lot to everybody sitting at this table, and who means a lot to me, and I know to Brenda and Louise as well, and to her family. So, can I ask you to come up? Kim Nichols, our City Clerk. So, Kim is being recognized tonight for attaining the prestigious designation as a master municipal clerk. And we didn't need any certificate or any state recognition to tell us that she was a master at her job. However, she's achieved it, and she's earned it. Absolutely. And, you know, her and Diane, who's taking pictures right now, you know, comprise a really effective team for the city of Salisbury and the Salisbury City Council. And I gotta say, as a City Council person and a City Council President, from 2013 on, or 2013 to 2015, and somebody who really wasn't deeply involved with city government, she was the one who made me look...
Look good.
Look okay. There. But it would've been a lot worse if it hadn't been for Kim. So, Kim Nichols is, I think, known statewide, known throughout her profession, really truly nationally. She attended a national conference, was it just last year?
I skipped last year.
The year before, 2015? In Milwaukee. And really is well-known for how talented and what a good job she does. And, you know, she is communicative, effective, and really ensures that the council has everything that they need, and really has become an integral part to the whole legislative process for the city of Salisbury. So, I want to read this certificate of recognition. Then I'd love for your family to come up, if we can, maybe get a picture with the City Council. Is that okay? If family's okay with that? All right. So, this is a certificate of recognition presented to Kimberly R. Nichols, City Clerk of the city of Salisbury, for attaining the prestigious designation of master municipal clerk, as conferred upon her by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks on January 10th, 2017, for successful completion of all educational and professional components of the program. The International Institute of Municipal Clerks is a professional nonprofit association that promotes continuing education and certification through university and college-based institutes, and provides networking solutions, services, and benefits to its members worldwide. And this certificate is issued in that recognition this 23rd day of January 2017, signed by myself and Jackie, the City Council President, on behalf of the entire City Council, and we are all so, so proud to know you and to work with you. Do you want to get a picture with the council?
Yes, thank you so much.
Can you ask your family to come up? Can you? Come on. I got you. I just took it.
Thank you very much. My mother, too. Let's see. You're okay? How's this? Thank you.
The mayor was very nice in his words. I will tell you, that lady is one of the most professional people I've ever met or worked with. And there are a lot of idiosyncrasies up here, and she... Yes, Mr. Irtin being one. No. In all seriousness, there are a lot of things that go on, and I can trust Kim to keep me out of trouble. And that is very important, believe me. I will also say that when information is necessary, I get her immediately on the phone. If I can't get her, she calls me back immediately, and the information is always delivered precisely, concisely, and right to the point. And that is a great help in us doing our job. So, you deserve it.
Thank you. And can I add, I had a great mentor.
Yes. You may. I think she's got me already.
It's a well-deserved award, but to give everyone here an idea of just what this award is, this will tell you. Back in 2012, just four years ago, the award she has received this evening, she's among the elite. Just in the state of Maryland, four years ago, only three members received that award, that ever had that award. Brenda Colgrove was one, and now then, Kim is our member of the elite. This is a nationwide... Now, at that time, four years ago, that award was only received by less than 700 nationwide, from here to California, Texas, and so forth. So, you are a very distinguished person, and you're a hallmark of excellence, and we certainly are very proud of you, Kim. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Appreciate it. Okay. At this time, I'd accept a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented. Sorry.
We've got the community presentation from the wheelhouse.
I thought that was... Okay, it's not on here. Sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, they have... They filled out a form for after... Okay. I apologize. There's a group to give us a presentation on the wheelhouse? I apologize again. I thought you were gonna go with the end.
Oh, my goodness.
The mayor's got his...
You got the... Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're gonna have Chelsea, Jessica, and Latonya?
Yes.
Okay.
While the mayor's getting that figured out, we are the co-directors of the wheelhouse. I'm Chelsea.
I'm Latonya.
I'm Jessica.
And we are part of an initiative of IMBO, which is the International Mountain Bicycling Association, but we are the outreach program. We are a bicycle donation hub, which means that we take and refurbish old, used bicycles that nobody wants or haven't been ridden, and we give them new life. We either fix them up and get them to people who can use them, or we use them for parts and scrap them. So, we are constantly trying to renew, reuse, and refurbish. And we are partnering with local community organizations, including Hope. We just donated before Christmas 10 bicycles to Hope for their... some of their homeless population, and we have an MOU agreement with them to continue providing and sharing resources and their database of people. And we are partnering with people in DHR and some of the other local shelters and community homes to get people bicycles. We are also donating bikes to children, and we are also doing community events like slow rolls and children's events like Take a Kid Mountain Biking Day, teaching skills, road riding skills, trail riding skills, all those sorts of things, to enable kids to know how to ride a bike and do it safely. And we do that for any age as well, because there are some people who need to learn how to ride a bike still at this age. So, eventually, we're gonna get this pathway going, I think. Do you need help, Jay?
No, it's duplicated. It's just, I think, a matter of finding where it...
I also know this stuff.
Well, anyway, we take volunteers in any form, whether you want to help us load bikes, take bikes to events, if you want to learn how to work on bikes, if you already know how to work on bikes, if you have bikes to donate. Actually, Sarah Reen donated some bikes to us, and we already got one of them rolling. And the mayor has ridden some of our bikes, which I think there's at least one picture in there that you'll see. And the mayor and the police chief have been very, very supportive of us. It started actually in my house, housing all of these bikes. We couldn't walk in my living room, we couldn't use our garage, we couldn't use our basement, and the police chief heard about what we were doing, and she decided to help us house some of the bikes. And then we actually got donated the space that we're in now, which is right downtown here. We're actually right across the street. We're underneath the Old Town Deli, and so we're operating under there at the moment. Yay, there it is. And so, we got donated the space by Deverco, by Brad, Brad Gillis and Chris Gilkerson and company, Deverco. Anyway, so, this is the wheelhouse. That is a picture from one of our community day events, and the chief is there on the left side of the frame, and that is just a whole group of people that went on a slow roll ride all together, just for the sake of being together and being outside and doing something healthy. Can we do it? Oh.
Sure. So, our mission at the wheelhouse, excuse me, the wheelhouse is a bicycle donation hub. It promotes equality, health, transportation, and employment for youth and adults on Maryland's eastern shore. We accomplish our mission by...
That's why I kept one of these. So, we receive and refurbish donated bicycles and cycling equipment. So, that means we don't just take bikes. If you've got a handlebar, if you've got helmets, we'll take anything. We can use it, because we can put it on something else. We can put it to use. We maintain a fleet of bicycles for youth and community and youth events. So, we have a lot of kids bikes, we have a lot of kind of upright cruiser bikes for the people who maybe haven't been on a bike in a while, maybe 30 or so years. We've had grandmothers riding with grandsons, grandmothers who haven't been on a bike in 40 years, who are enjoying something healthy and outside to do with their kids and grandkids, which has just been phenomenal. We provide bicycles and locks through partner organizations to children and adults in need. So, these are just pictures from some more of our events. So, on the left side is a young man who received a bike from us through the chief. And so, we actually got... one of his teachers got in touch with the chief and us and said, there was this young man who was very deserving and had his bike stolen previously, and he was trying to do some side work, like raking and shoveling and things, to help his family out. And so, we were able to get a bike to him before Christmas. The middle picture with our... That's okay. The middle picture there is... you can notice a familiar face there in our mayor. We donated 10 bikes to George Benedict, who I'm sure a lot of you recognize. He is through Hope, which is one of the homeless coalition organizations, so we got those 10 bikes to them. And then on the right side is a picture of a man named Jay. He's a local business owner and had lost his... the use of his car, and he washes fleet vehicles and had... his business had suffered very, very much because of his lack of transportation. And so, we built him a wagon that he could carry all of his things and got him back on the road, and we're still in contact with him. He's telling us how everything's going, but it's greatly, greatly improved his range of his business. We often teach at least five or six children to ride at any one of our events, and so these are just some of the kids that have learned how to ride. We have these balance bikes that actually teach children better than training wheels do, and they were loving it. The little girl on the left learned how to trail ride, and it was her first day on a two-wheeled bike, and she absolutely loved it. She would not stop all day long. That was at the Hazel Outdoor Discovery Center. And then the other two pictures are from some of our events with New Dimensions Ministries. The picture in the top left is one of my all-time favorite pictures, and the little boy who looks triumphant is actually Jessica's son, and his name is Jeremiah. And that was the first day that he learned how to ride his bike on the road, and he was so excited. And this is a community event, a slow roll, so we had just gotten a bunch of people together to ride together and learn how to ride on the road. And then the other picture is kids learning how to ride trails, which is important, too. We have a lot of trails, a lot of trail riding available in our local area. We also teach people how to work on, repair, and take care of bikes. And so, I don't think anybody in any of these pictures knew how to work on bikes, including Latonya and I, before we really started this. But taking care of a bike, learning how to work on a bike, understanding a bike, is very, very important, and it's a skill that can translate into other things. And so, if we can empower people to know how to fix something, that can translate into auto mechanics, that can translate to any skill, knowing that they can tackle something, knowing that they can figure out how something works. So, we've got a mixture of ages there. We've got some young boys, we've got some young girls, and then us. So, I don't know if you can read that?
So, we have many goals. We're dedicated to bridging the racial, gender, age, and socioeconomic divides in our community through the use of the bicycle. And the way that you can help us is by donating bicycles and bike-related parts and tools. Volunteer. We have events. You can go on our Facebook page. Whenever we have events, we definitely let people know, but we go out in the community, and we have, like she said previously, slow rolls. And what a slow roll would do is give people an opportunity to get on a bike that maybe hasn't done it in a while. Help us find an enclosed trailer, as well as ground floor spaces for storage and/or a storefront, and help us attain funding to continue and broaden our efforts. For me personally, the reason I really got involved with the wheelhouse, I was introduced to Chelsea through a program we started at our church at New Dimensions, and they helped us build a bike trail in the back of our church so that our kids could have something different to do. And as we got involved with it, as she said, my son rode for the first time on the street. And then it gives him an opportunity to meet people he wouldn't ordinarily come in contact with, and it gives me an opportunity to develop relationships with people I may not ordinarily come in contact with. And then, once I begin to trust those people, we begin to have meaningful relationships about things that are going on in our community and in our society as a whole. So, the wheelhouse is not just about bikes. It's about people being able to come together and to influence each other's lives as well.
Yeah, we keep saying it's not about the bikes, it's about the people. We're trying to use the bike as a bridge, because everybody remembers the first time they rode a bike. Everybody remembers their first bike. And if all of us have that one thing in common, that means that we have common ground. So, it doesn't matter where we come from, doesn't matter what we believe in, doesn't matter our religion, doesn't matter at all. All that matters is we have this one piece of joy that we all know. And if we can use that, then we can have a conversation, we can get to know each other, we can use the bike as this tool to get together.
Thank you very much.
Did you have any questions? Any questions?
Well, can I just point out, I know it was on the screen, and I assume anybody watching on PAC-14 could see it, but yeah, just wanted to reiterate, the wheelhouse, sby@gmail.com is your email address, and you're located 120A North Division Street in Salisbury, for anybody who wants to volunteer or has a bike.
Yes, or bike-related part.
Bike-related part. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? No?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I apologize again for the confusion about going first or last. Okay, at this time, I'll obtain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Boda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll obtain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Boda and Mr. Irtin. Good evening, master...
That's right.
City clerk.
Most decorated clerk.
Most... Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you again for that. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the January 3rd, 2017 work session minutes, the January 9th, 2017 regular meeting minutes, and we have some appointments to the Human Rights Advisory Committee. The first one is Resolution Number 2714, approving the appointment of Vanice L. Antrim to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending January 2021. Resolution Number 2715, approving the appointment of Kelly Carey to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending January 2021. Resolution Number 2716, approving the appointment of Laura Bradford to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for the same term, 2021, of January 2021. Resolution Number 2717, approving the appointment of Jean Schreckengost to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for the term ending January 2021. And Resolution Number 2718, approving the appointment of Mark Decker to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for the same term ending January 2021. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. If any of the following people are here, Vanice, Kelly, Laura, Jean, or Mark, could you please stand up and be recognized?
I'm volunteering.
You played softball at SU.
I did.
See? Congratulations. Thank you very much for volunteering. Okay, at this time, I'll obtain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
Mr. Irtin? Good evening, Ms. Nichols. How are you?
Miss who?
Oh, sorry. Miller. Jen.
Yes. Good evening.
See, I was thinking you were gonna make you a master clerk as well.
I'll be a master something.
Okay.
I promise. Okay.
Procurement something.
It's coming.
Master procurer.
Yes. The first item this evening is a change order. The procurement division received a request from the Department of Public Works to process change order number one in the amount of $112,000, $112,880.28 for contract 100-16, Main Street Master Plan Phase II Construction. This change order would provide for a groundwater treatment system for one month to address potential ground contamination and would increase the contract time by 90 days. The date for substantial completion is now anticipated to be December 27, 2017. This change order for an expanded scope of services is requested and necessary due to noted unforeseen circumstances. Funds are available in the account noted in your council packet. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number one, as noted above, to Carrato Construction Company in the amount of $112,880.28.
Questions?
The last item this evening is a request for a declaration of surplus. The procurement department received a request from the Salisbury Fire Department to declare 18 pieces of turnout gear, which is 10 coats and eight pairs of pants, as surplus. These items have surpassed their usable life and must be disposed of in accordance with the National Fire Protection Association Code 1851, so they are not utilized for further service. Procurement Division requests council's approval to declare the noted items surplus and to allow the city of Salisbury Fire Department to destroy of the gear.
Questions? Just for the public certification chief, could you just... How many years do we get out of a set of gear?
The standard is for 10.
10.
10 useful years from the date of manufacture, so they can't even sit on the shelf. Even if they're not used, they have to be destroyed.
Thank you. All right, here are no other questions. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. I'll obtain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2719.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson and Mr. Boda. Ms. Clans, good evening.
Good evening. Before you, it was Resolution 2719, a resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, adopting a capital improvement plan, CIP, for the five-year period of FY '18 to FY '22. Whereas it is important for the city to develop a short-range plan showing its capital outlay needs and setting forth a plan for financing those needs, and whereas the development of such a plan helps to ensure that the city's short-range capital needs are addressed in a responsible manner, helps to place those needs in a priority order, and helps anticipate the resources that will be available to finance those needs. And whereas the city staff has developed the attached capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year '18 and ending in fiscal year '22. And whereas the city council has reviewed the attached capital improvement plan and finds that it reflects the capital needs of the city as can be best reasonably anticipated. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council adopts the attached capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year '18 and ending in fiscal year '22.
'22.
Questions?
May I, just really quickly, two things. One, I want to thank the council for the input, I guess it was a week ago, incredibly useful, and we've got some direction on conversations we need to have as a city based on that, so thank you. Actually, three things. Two, just for anybody interested in some of the long-range planning efforts that we've talked about in the public, Urban Greenway Bike Plan, here you can see exactly how we implement those plans, City Park Master Plan, Zoo Plan, et cetera. And then lastly, I just want to acknowledge our master municipal clerk. This is about a quarter of the size that a packet that's included the CIP has ever been, because she got it all on the one page, so I don't know how he did that, but I'm glad, and it's actually still legible, so.
Mr. Demone is to thank.
Mr. Demone, okay, all right, well, then all credit goes to Mr. Demone. It takes a master municipal clerk to so graciously give credit to somebody else. But anyway, thank you, and yeah, I think it's all still legible, and we're saving paper. Thank you.
The only comment that I would have is that, looking at the CIP plan, it's both impressive and scary to try to do this in a conservative manner, to make sure we get the best bang for our buck. That's our concern, sitting on the council, I think I speak for all the council. So this aggressive plan is just a continuation of what we've started, and we'll keep going until it's done, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. Okay, hearing no other questions, I'll call the motion on Resolution Number 2719. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2411.
So moved.
Mr. Boda.
Second.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Sorry, Ms. Jackson, I appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. It's the second reading of Ordinance Number 2411, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving amendment of the city's capital project fund budget to reallocate funding for the Main Street Master Plan project, whereas Ordinance 2357 authorized the city to sell bonds for the FY 2016 budget, whereas the ordinance allocated bond funding for the Beaver Dam Creek Title Dam repairs in Main Street Master Plan, and whereas Public Works is seeking to move unused funds from Beaver Dam Creek Title Repairs to the Main Street Master Plan, now therefore be it ordained by the city council. City of Salisbury, Maryland, it sees capital fund budget being is hereby amended as follows: decrease in the Beaver Dam Creek Title Dam repair by $548,116.80, account 98116-513026-48301, and an increase in the Main Street Master Plan construction by $548,116.80, account
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2411, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2412 for the second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Ierton.
Second.
Ms. Jackson. Just tell me.
It's an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend the annual registration fee for rental dwelling unit, the annual license fee for rental dwelling unit owners, and the noncompliant delinquent fees associated with rental dwellings and licenses, whereas the fee for the annual registration of a rental dwelling unit shall be set by ordinance per Section 15.26.040 of the city code, and whereas the annual license fee for rental dwelling unit owners shall be set by ordinance per Section 15.26.050 of the city code, and whereas there are also fees associated with delinquency with regard to registration of rental dwelling units and landlord licenses per Section 15.26.060, now therefore be it ordained and acted by the council of the City of Salisbury, the following updated fees are established and shall remain in effect until changed by subsequent legislation. The rental dwelling unit fee for annual registration is found in Section 15.26.040. The initial registration shall be $120, the renewal registration shall be $60. The noncompliant rental dwelling unit fee will be $125 for the first noncompliant rental dwelling unit, and $60 plus a surcharge of $28 for each additional rental dwelling unit registered under the same license. Delinquent rental dwelling unit fee will be $255 for the first noncompliant rental dwelling unit, and $60 plus a surcharge of $36 for each additional rental dwelling unit registered under the same license. The annual license fee for rental dwelling unit owners under Section 15.26.050. Initial license shall be $120, the renewal license $60. Noncompliant rental dwelling owner license fee will be $125, and the delinquent rental dwelling owner license fee will be $255.
Questions?
I think just the one comment I'll make, I want to thank the mayor for, as they went, as we discussed this some late last year, but for balancing it out where it, for those that aren't compliant, it costs you. But we don't put that on the back of the good landlords versus those who are not compliant, so thank you for balancing that out properly.
I have one question, just because I didn't hear, I'm not sure I heard the right number. On the renewal registration for annual registration, what was the number you said?
Sixty.
Sixty, okay. I thought I heard fifty, but it's sixty. Okay.
It says sixty.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right. Hearing no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2412, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Any opposed? I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2413 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Ierton. Mr. Tillman.
The second reading of Ordinance Number 2413, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury for the closing of a portion of North Division Street between North Salisbury Boulevard and Decatur Avenue. This is a second reading, if you want me, I can go through the whereas's and clauses, but I think the diagram best describes what's being done here.
Do we have any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2413, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion to approve Ordinance 2414, I'll entertain right now.
So moved.
Mr. Rudicil, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman.
Again, this is the second reading of 2414, an ordinance to the City of Salisbury for the abandonment of a portion of an existing utility easement on property owned by Village of Hope Inc. at the homes of Johnson's Pond, located at 1001 Lake Street, Salisbury Election District, Wycomico County, State of Maryland. Again, if you, do you want me to go through the whereas clauses? Again, basically, this was at the request of the property owner who would like to relocate the existing utility easement there.
Any questions? Now call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2414 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2415 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton. Mr. Tillman.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 2415. There was a prior ordinance where we accepted a donation, we're now authorizing its expenditure. An ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving amendment of the FY 2017 general fund budget to reallocate a donation previously accepted to reimburse the purchase of summer youth employment uniforms. Whereas in the summer of 2016, the city established a pilot program geared at employing ten youth ages sixteen to twenty-four who were either in or out of school, and whereas the youth received uniforms that were paid for and hold by the city. And whereas the Greater Salisbury Committee has donated funds to reimburse the city for the summer youth work program uniforms for the amount of $756.15, and whereas the city's FY 2017 budget was amended to include an appropriation of the $756.15 donated by the Greater Salisbury Committee, and whereas the city must now transfer the appropriated $756.15 to an account which originally paid for the uniforms, and whereas the summer youth work program uniforms were originally paid for by the water and sewer account, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the city's fiscal year 2017 general fund budget being is hereby amended as follows, with a decreased miscellaneous revenue account 01000-456911 by $756.15, and an increase in the water and sewer account 86083-502083 by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2415 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Nichols, do we have any public comments?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Mr. Council President, could I for just a second ask just a point of privilege to take a moment and ask the council, our mayor, and our citizens to remember a giant in my neighborhood. Joe Marino died a couple days ago on the nineteenth. Joe and Ms. Eunice had lived in, on New York, I mean, on Philadelphia Avenue for fifty years. He was a member of the St. Francis Church, the Knights of Columbus, he's a former J.C., he was a former fireman, and when he and Ms. Eunice moved to the neighborhood, our neighborhood association was called the New York Ladies' Avenue Association, and it all centered around a tennis court where our little tot lot is up the street. And he is a dad and a friend to so many in our neighborhood, and I can tell you that in the thousands of times that I have knocked on doors in our city, Mr. Joe would always come out on the front porch and tell me to get him, Jim, get him. And so my neighborhood, my street with Philadelphia Avenue is lost to a giant, and I would just ask that you keep the Marino family in your prayers at this time. Thanks.
Yes, our condolences certainly go out to the family. Okay, there's no other business. We are adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming. Thank you for staying.
Yes.
Nice to see you.
Yes.